Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting. Today is Thursday, January 5th, 2023. It's 6:30 PM, and we are meeting in the Assembly Chambers. We'll start tonight with the invocation from Major Dave Davis of the Salvation Army.
Happy New Year. Oh, I'm pretty excited. Join me, please. Gracious Heavenly Father, we give you the praise and glory. We thank you for the many privileges and the blessings that we have had through 2022. And here we are in a new year, full of expectations and excitement. Father, we just ask you for your continued blessing. Right now, we ask your blessing and anointing upon our mayor and our Assembly members and staff. Father, we thank you for their commitment. We thank you for stepping forward and accepting the duties and responsibilities that is theirs. Father, we ask you for your blessing upon them as they fulfill those duties. Father, we ask your continued blessing throughout the Kodiak Island. In Jesus' name, we pray amen.
We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiak Alutic people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Alutic region. We recognize the Alutic culture that enriches our community to this day. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Mr. Arnt.
Here.
Mr. Delgado.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Lidu.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Move to amend the agenda by removing Agenda Item 14.C.2, Ordinance Number FY 2023-13, amending Kodiak Island Borough Title 17 "Zoning", Chapter 180 "Signs", Section 17.180.010 "Signs", Description and Intent to Require Zoning Compliance Permits for Certain Signs Off the Agenda.
Amy?
We need a motion first. So I'll move to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
Let me do it again.
Thank you, Scott.
Well, first we...
Second. No.
So we have a first from Assembly Member Arnt and a second from Assembly Member Mary Griffin. And now, do you want us to reread that motion? Yes, please.
Move to amend the agenda by removing Agenda Item 14.C.2, Ordinance Number FY 2023-13, amending Kodiak Island Borough Title 17 "Zoning", Chapter 180 "Signs", Section 17.180.010 "Signs", Description and Intent to Require Zoning Compliance Permits for Certain Signs Off the Agenda.
Second.
May we please have a roll call vote on the motion to amend?
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidu.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries, seven zero.
We're going to have a voice vote on the motion as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone against, please say no. Next, we have citizen comments. If you'd like to call in, our phone number is 907-486-3231, or toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. If you are going to give comment here, if you please sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any individual member thereof. If calling in, turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback.
Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly, I'm Alan Schmidt. I'm the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I want to thank you not only for your service on the Assembly, but also for amending the agenda so that we can deal with that in the first instance at the Commission level. So, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any calls? Not seeing anyone else in the audience will move on that is looking to give comment. I do see you, just that you're not commenting. We'll move on to awards and presentations. Our first one tonight is the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Hello, Dora. So, the first award is just the... Isn't really specific to any person. It's just the Kodiak Island Borough. But the second one is actually to Dora, and I'll go ahead and read that, and then I will come present it to you. It says, "This certificate of recognition for budget preparation is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association to those individuals who have been instrumental in their government unit, achieving a distinguished budget presentation award. The distinguished budget presentation award, which is the highest award in governmental budgeting, is presented to those government units whose budgets are judged to adhere to program standards." So, Dora, on behalf of the Assembly, thank you very much. I know a lot of your work goes unseen until budget time, but we know you're busy all year long, so congratulations on this.
I just want to add that staff participates, and not just the finance staff. There's program descriptions that are filled out by other department staff, and there's service area work programs that are contributed to this to make this a document for the community to use. And I appreciate the GFOA standards and criteria. It helps enforce and include information that is seen as important for the community. So, thank you.
Next on the agenda is committee reports. Does anyone in the Assembly have any reports from committees tonight? I guess there's no committees meeting thus far this year, so we'll try that again next time. Tonight, we have one public hearing for Ordinance Number Fiscal Year 23-12, amending the Kodiak Island Borough Title 15 Buildings in Construction, Chapter 40 Building and Lot Numbering, Section 15.40.080, Procedure for Addressing Newly Created Lots.
Move to adopt Ordinance Number FY 2023-12.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. We will have a staff report. Is there anything to add to that?
This is the fourth and final time that you'll hear about this ordinance fixing the code for the way that we address newly created lots. Community Development is requesting that KIBC 154080 be changed from addressing lots during the preliminary plat review process to at the earliest occurrence of either... No. Yes. Sorry. Do I have to start over, or can I just? Thanks. At the earliest occurrence of either issuance of a driveway permit, issuance of a building permit, or at the request of an owner.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. There is a chance for citizen comments for the public hearing. If you'd like to call in tonight, please call into 907-486-3231, or you can use our toll-free number 1-855-492-9202. If you're going to call in or speak at the podium, we ask you to sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If you are calling in, please remember to turn off any listening device to prevent feedback. Not seeing any phone calls, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any assembly discussion on this tonight? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidu.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries, seven zero.
Next, we have the Borough Manager's Report. Mr. Conrad?
Good evening, and thank you. I have received, since last week, two copies of ratings for Borough Manager Evaluation. If there's any more to be turned in, please make sure I get them, and I will forward them to Megan for evaluation next week. I see Mr. Smiley has his. Had a very interesting week this week. When I signed up as interim Borough Manager, I had no idea I'd be signing for $4.7 million on a frequent basis. So, we, finance staff and I, completed the application for the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, the obligation of $4,787,173.04. And this will be... And I did not finish my sentence here. So, this will be... The first of two trenches will be received next week. So, there'll be two-plus million in our coffers next week from this program. We have entered into conversations about the 717 Egan Way, the old Mel Health properties. We've entered into discussions on that particular potential lease. So that I make sure that everyone here understands, and understands that I listen, the RFP will be put into the... Onto the website tomorrow for the first four vehicles, and it'll be published in the Anchorage Daily News on Monday. And we will be calling different dealerships to make sure that we get some participation in this. We anticipate there'll be one put out for pickup trucks next week. I'm not going to go through everything. On the landfill rock project, I have some numbers there. We've had an incredible amount of material already blasted and made into gravel. Remaining bankyards to process next year blast and processes 32,733 cubic yards. If you happen to go to the landfill, go out to CND, there is giant piles of gravel out there. It's very impressive. And I also am very pleased with the amount of space that we're going to gain for CND and other activities at the landfill based on this project. At the same time, Jenna and I have completed and submitted all of the paperwork for the State Revolving Fund Loan, and they have acknowledged receipt of that for review. The Pats Property Assessment and Taxation Software RFP is on the street for bid, and the due date is February 28th, 2023. This has been a long haul putting this package together for this software, which needs to be updated because of the age of the software and lack of support from the vendor. So, this is... I believe the software's been here for quite a few years. We need to have this updated. And property valuation in the city should be completed next week. And this is all the actual inspections of the properties required, and that will then be turned into, analyzed and reviewed for... If the property valuation has to be increased, so. And then there's quite the list. I did meet this morning with the City of Kodiak. I was invited with them to participate in a teleconference with Sebo Kelly, our federal consultant. And he will be available and providing information regarding the federal CIP list, how we go about doing that, what is probably most feasible for us. And he will be participating and available for the joint work session on the 18th. And that's all I have for this evening, unless there's questions. Thank you very much.
Jeff?
Just a question regarding the landfill. I was out there the other day to drop some stuff off, and it's the first time where I've had the scale where I questioned it after I left. And I'm just curious how frequently we look at that, or how frequently it's calibrated, or if that even happens on a... Any kind of basis?
Annually, is requirement of the State of Alaska. We also, if we encounter problems, we will call our scale vendor and bring the scale vendor down. This is not an excuse, but occasionally with freeze saw, our balance gets off a little bit, and normally, within, you know, a few hours, it actually corrects itself.
Thank you.
Mr. Smiley.
With regard to the software, are you going to ask for people to come and train your people on it?
That will always be anything with new software. You have to learn the program, and then you also need to learn how to access the support to keep the software running and updates and various things of that nature.
Thank you.
I just have a few quick messages. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. Again, congrats to the Finance Department and all your hard work that goes in. The clerk has sent out forms to the Assembly members that are to be used for requesting items to be placed on upcoming agendas. So if you have any questions about that, that should be in your inboxes or printed for you, Mr. Arnt. The Consolidation Committee has a meeting upcoming, and I just wanted to put a plug out there. If you're on the Consolidation Committee, we really need to make a quorum at this next meeting because I've asked your Chair to give me a report on where the Consolidation Committee is at, and he can't have that approved unless there's a quorum. So if you're on that committee, please make sure that you're in contact with Mr. Griffin and you make that next meeting. We do have a joint work session coming up on January 18th, and the agenda is out and finalized for that. So we look forward to catching up with the City and what they're doing. And that's all for tonight. Moving on, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move into our new business. And we have a contract tonight... Actually, two contracts tonight. The first one is Contract Number Fiscal Year 2020-08B, Amending the Contract Number Fiscal Year 2020-08 by Adjusting the Fee to Lobbying Services Agreement with Hickey &amp; Associates.
Move to authorize Manager to execute Contract Number FY 2020-08B by adjusting the fee to the lobbying service agreement with Hickey &amp; Associates.
Second.
Mr. Conrad, do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hickey has been the state lobbyist for a number of years for the Kodiak Island Borough. Last year, due to the financial issues with the state and the borough, Mr. Hickey actually voluntarily reduced his contract price from $45,000 to $40,000. He has contacted us and asked for the last year, current year, ending calendar 2023, that the $5,000 that was voluntarily given back last year be reinstated. And there is money, has been money budgeted for that purpose. So I think this is a very reasonable request, and I would request that you consider voting yes for this.
Thank you. Is there any assembly discussion on this item? Mr. Arnt?
Yeah, I just want to say that I support this very much. I thought it was very generous of him last year. And in our time of need, so I have no problem reinstating it to the original, especially in light for the public. It's been the same price for approximately the last six years. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidu.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, Your Honor.
Our next contract is Number Fiscal Year 2023-17, Approval of Two-Year Contract with RTS Auto for Auto Repairs and Tire Services.
Move to authorize the Manager to award Contract Number FY 2023-17 with RTS Auto for a two-year term with three additional one-year extension options for auto repairs and tire services.
Second.
Mr. Conrad?
Yes, this contract has been quite the challenge. This is the third time that the Borough has advertised for this contract. This is the first responsive bidder. I personally have taken my vehicle to these folks for a couple of times. They're very responsive and very thorough, in my experience, and I would request consideration for the approval of this contract.
Thank you. Are there any assembly member comments or questions? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mr. Lidu.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions tonight, we have one resolution. It's Resolution Number Fiscal Year 2023-18, Adopting an Alternative Allocation Method for the Fiscal Year 23 Shared Fisheries Business Tax Program and Certifying that the allocation method fairly represents the distribution of significant effects of fisheries business activity in FMA 13 Kodiak Area.
Move to adopt Resolution Number FY 2023-18.
Second.
And we have a staff report from Dora.
Evening. This is an annual resolution air certifying that you believe this fairly represents an allocation between us and the, I think, seven other areas in FMLA 13, which is the Kodiak Area for Fishery Tax Distribution from the state. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the Assembly? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidu.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, seven zero.
Tonight, we have one ordinance for introduction. It's Ordinance Number Fiscal Year 2023-02B of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, Amending Ordinance Fiscal Year 2023-02, Fiscal Year 2023 Budget by Amending Budgets and Appropriations to account for the additional school bond debt reimbursement payments received from the State of Alaska.
Move to advance Ordinance Number FY 2023-02B to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly on January 19th, 2023.
Second.
Is there a staff report, Dora?
Before you, there's a version two you should find in your packet that reflects the changes that were requested during the work session, mainly setting up a project for vehicles so that if it crosses multiple fiscal years, we're not having to rebudget for those, moving the money that was previously allocated towards school roof... Two different school roof projects into the renewal and replacement, so.
Thank you. Tonight, are there any questions by the Assembly? We will see this at the work session next week as well. Mr. Arnt?
Yeah, I... Once again, as I had expressed last week, I have a problem with, you know, basically, this is taking the money away from the renewal and replace on there, and the $560,000 for the Borough Vehicle Replacement. And once again, as I said, part of my problem with this is we already have some money. It isn't a specific project, but it was put in the contingency fund of between $240,000 and $260,000. I don't remember, recall exactly how much that was. But that's what the intent was, and everybody here except Mr. Lidu approved that budget with that understanding. I think we need to spend that money first because I also don't feel that we need $560,000 towards the vehicles we're talking about. So... And now that we're out to bid, if we need additional money, it's something we can deal with. But I've... I wanted to bring it up because then I'm going to... I'd like to have some discussion. Maybe I just need to go ahead and move to amend. At this time, the ordinance to take, delete, the item for the Borough Vehicle Replacement shows as number 23003 and the amount of $560,000, and add the $560,000 to the Renewal and Replacement Fund, which would bring that to $4,607,302. So I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there assembly discussion? Mr. Arnt?
Thank you. I just feel that, number one, we have projects to do in maintenance on the schools, and I prefer to see this money there. The vehicle replacement is more of an operating budget item, not taking money that was... We got reimbursed. Basically, it's taxpayer money that we're spending, either way. But when we already have some money in the budget, and I also see the potential that if we need a little bit more, there is that room in the budget, looking at the, basically, the last six months collections on things. So, this would help protect the renewal and replacement fund. And that's why I encourage going forward to public hearing with it there. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah, so last week, I had thought that... Maybe I said it wrong, but I thought that we were going to take the $560,000 out of the general fund piece, and the renewal and replacement would not get a ding off of it. And maybe I'm just looking at it wrong. But, taking that $560,000 out, we did put some in contingencies, so that... During the budget work sessions and at the end of it all. But my thought was taking that $560,000 out of the general fund piece, which didn't change from last week. So, I may have misspoke last week when I had recommended the changes. So, that way, the renewal and replacement would not be affected. But if we're going to take the $560,000 out of 415, then, and put it back into renewal and replacement, then we would have to adjust the general fund one and put it back in there. But I don't see why we need to make so many changes to it when all we're trying to do is keep the money in the renewal and replacement. So basically, taking $560,000 out of general fund and putting it into renewal and replacement instead of just mixing the whole Borough Vehicle Replacement 415.
Are there any other assembly comments? Mr. Smiley?
Manager Conrad, can you explain why this is $560,000?
I believe that was a number that James Turner came up with last week. Just a quick estimate.
For what?
Figuring, I think that we said seven vehicles? Seven vehicles times $80,000 at today's prices? And I know it's not going to be that high, but... But that gives leeway if the prices are that high. So, it gives a little bit of cushion in case so that we can get those seven vehicles replaced. So that's where the number of $560,000 comes in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other assembly comments? Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion to amend?
Mr. Smith. Mr. Turner.
No.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
No.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidu.
No.
Mr. Smiley.
No.
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion failed, five noes, two yes.
Is there any other further Assembly discussion? May we please have a roll call vote on the original motion to adopt, or sorry, to move it forward to the next regular meeting on January 19?
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidoux?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, 7-0.
Our final item on the agenda tonight before citizens' comments is declaring a seat vacant on the Women's Base Service Area Board from Mr. Jacob Castanque.
Move to accept the resignation of Mr. Jacob Castanque from the Women's Base Service Area Board effective December 2, 2022.
Second.
Is there any Assembly discussion? May we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidoux?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, 7-0.
That brings us to citizens' comments. If you'd like to call in tonight, the local number is 907-486-3231, toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. If you're here in the building and you'd like to come up to the podium and speak, please remember to sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking, and address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any other member thereof. If you are calling in, please remember to turn down your listening device to prevent feedback.
My name is David Conrad. I am speaking both as interim manager and as a citizen. I was contacted yesterday by school district staff and informed that there was water coming out of a manhole rather than going into it, and we found out that, basically, we ended up having a backed-up sewer. So, I would like to thank the staff of the city, Public Works Department, who I felt really bad going into their office because I was kind of making it their problem, but they accepted their problem quite, quite well, and it prevented any real messes happening around the Bancroft area and also at East Elementary. We don't thank each other often enough. Pardon my pun, but that was a crappy job, and they did it really well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any calls? Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to Assembly member comments. Tonight, we'll start with Mr. Turner.
No comments tonight, thank you.
Mr. Delgado?
No comments.
Mr. Griffin?
Happy New Year.
Mr. Smith?
No further comments.
Mr. Arnt?
No further comments.
Mr. Lidoux?
No comments.
Mr. Smiley?
Yeah, I got some comments. You're not alone in finding a backed-up sewer. We had one at our house, too, and they came out after a call and dealt with it, and you're right, we need to thank them more often. It was a smelly job, and they did it well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. The next Assembly work session is scheduled for Thursday, January 12, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 19, 2023, at 6:30 p.m., also in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The Borough Assembly and City Council will hold a joint work session on Wednesday, January 18, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. Here's where we throw in the change. It will be held in the City Library Multipurpose Room. Please remember, the Borough offices will be closed on Monday, January 16, 2023, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. And that ends the regular meeting. Next, the Assembly is going to discuss the next steps to take on the manager hire, which may include discussion of the Borough Manager applicants.
Move to convene into executive session to discuss the next steps to take on the manager hire, which may include discussion of the Borough Manager applicants under the authority of Kodiak Island Borough Code 2.30.030 F1C for the purpose of discussing matters which may tend to prejudice the reputation or character of a person who has been notified of the potential executive session.
Second.
Is there any Assembly discussion? May we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidoux?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries, 7-0.
Move to invite the Mayor and Assembly Members into executive session.
Second.
Voice vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against, please say no. We will recess this meeting, and we'll move into executive session.